Our most kind and gracious God in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for everything you've done for us. We pray, dear Lord, for our nation that seeks you first, dear Lord, and take care of each and every parent here tonight, dear Lord. To bless the children, let us come together in accord tonight, dear Lord, to do the right thing for everything you've done for us. Bless our armed men and women home and abroad. Thank you, and these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let me ask if we would, all of our military men and women and veterans and our first responders, if you would stand, please. All of our military men and women, veterans and first responders, and let's show them appreciation. Okay. Alrighty. So it is my distinct honor, only time of the year I get to do this, is to chair a meeting, and our purpose to begin with, of course, we may call on you often for guidance as we go through this process. We're going to go through our selection and election of our chairman for the 14-15 school year, and we will do this, we'll open it up. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, go ahead. Where she is? Where she is? Confirmed, where she confirmed.
Didn't show up.
Didn't show up.
Confirmed.
Wait, I go, no, confirm. Yeah, right there.
Alright, Ms. Parks revealed vote.
Bane, present. Burge, present. Collins, present. Crete Moore, present. Williams, present. Heatherly, present. Warwick, present. Ryder, present. Wilson, present.
Okay, now we can move ahead, right? Let me say this, and I do appreciate the board's willingness to move this meeting to Thursday night. Of course, the last three, four years, the same week that we have the superintendent's training, and I've been driving back on Tuesday nights for this particular meeting and then going back. We appreciate you changing that to Thursday night to accommodate us on that, and that means a lot. Alright, we're going to open the floor for nominations, but let me say this first. The way we'll do this, we'll take the nominations, and then we'll ask for the vote in reverse order, and am I following protocol so far?
There needs to be a second for each nomination.
There needs to be a second for each nomination.
And then there needs to be a motion and a second to close nominations.
Okay, alright, so the motion.
So if the motion is made for someone, there has to be a second?
Yes.
Okay.
There's nomination in a second.
Okay.
Alright, we're going to open the floor for nominations for chairman, school board, Campbell County School Board.
I nominate Michael Warwick.
Alright, motion has been made nominate Michael Warwick for chairman, is there a second?
Second, yes. No, second.
Okay, second by Mr. Goins.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Johnny Burge.
Johnny Burge has been nominated.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Sharon Ryder.
I make a motion, nomination cease.
Alright. Okay, are we ready to vote?
I don't see you voting no.
Alright, we're going to be voting on Johnny Burge in reverse order, we'll be voting for him, and a yes vote is for Mr. Burge. You must have six votes to win the position, and so voting is now taking place.
Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crete Moore, no. Goins abstained. Heatherly, yes. Warwick, no. Ryder, yes. Rutherford abstained. Wilson abstained.
Alright, motion fail. Alright, this vote is for Mike Warwick for chairman.
Bane, no. Burge, no. Collins, no. Crete Moore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Warwick, yes. Ryder, no. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
So you have six yes, so.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I appreciate you guys, ladies and gentlemen, that supported me, and those that didn't, and we'll work on that as we go through. Now I'm going to open the nominations for vice chairman, and I'm going to nominate Crystal Crete. I think it's within my power to do that. Mr. Chair, I'm, I gotta get a second first.
Okay.
Okay, alright, any more motions?
Nominate Wallace Goins.
Have a second on Mr. Goins?
They nominated you for vice chairman. That's true.
Motion fails, lack of a second.
He said he don't.
I'd like not have it, I'm okay.
Okay. Motion fails, the lack of a second. Do I have any more nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Sharon Ryder.
Nomination for Ms. Ryder, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any more nominations?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a motion for nomination to cease.
So good.
Have a second?
Second.
Alright. Guess the last one is Sharon, we're going to vote on her first. Those who wish to have Sharon as vice chairman, vote yes.
If you want Sharon Ryder to be vice chairman, you vote for her. You want Chris Crete Moore, you vote for her. Just abstain, it's for Miss Ryder right now. It's for her. Okay, you gotta, you gotta put it in, see? It's for Miss Ryder. Okay.
We're voting on Ms. Ryder, Wallace.
Yeah, we're voting.
Are you okay?
I'm not ready to vote.
You're not ready to vote?
Yeah.
He can change his vote.
He can change his vote.
If you made the wrong vote.
Let's just clear it and start it over, okay?
I'm about to change again.
Okay, this vote is to elect Sharon as vice chairman, the pointer as vice chairman. A vote yes is for that, okay?
This is for, this is for Ms. Ryder.
Mike, would you explain?
She's not ready. You have to vote yes, no, and abstain.
Danny, you want to go help him?
Yeah, let the louder, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I wasn't trying to influence him anyway, I wasn't trying to influence him. No, I wasn't trying to, no.
Well, that's okay, so you don't have to vote on this for those things. That's what you're doing.
Okay, alright.
You have to confirm it, Wallace.
Alright, now does anyone want to change their vote? Alright, show us the vote.
Burge, yes. Collins abstained. Crete Moore abstained. Goins abstained. Heatherly, yes. Warwick, no. Ryder, yes. Rutherford abstained. Wilson abstained.
Motion fails. Okay. Alright, the next vote is to. This vote is to place Ms. Crete Moore as vice chairman. So cast your vote.
You start, I can push it.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Burge abstained. Collins, yes. Crete Moore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Warwick, yes. Ryder, no. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Congratulations. Alright, now I need, need a recognition of guest. Want to recognize JROTC.
Mr. Jones was told a week ago that he needed to address the school board and people here on a program, an ROTC program that we do, we teach financial planning. So he prepared the briefing, the briefing law. It's right here. Mr. Jones, I'm sorry to tell you that the computer won't let me take my jump drive to need to read that presentation, but if you stand right over here, I'll call for General Steiner, and could I call for Mr. Poston? Please come forward. We have a special award, it's called the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Achieving. If you could, step right over here, sir. Now, while they're coming and before we do anything else, let me tell you a little bit about this award. I'll let you keep that. And he did have an outstanding presentation prepared, I told him about two or three slides. Keep it brief, to the point. People are a little concerned about financial planning and what we teach students in the high school. He had a pretty good presentation, I may have made some corrections, and we were going to hang it up on the board there, and really put you under the gun. Is your mom here tonight? Ms. Jones, could you please come forward to?
Oh, yeah, there's a mom.
If you want something to take pictures, one of our cadets can probably help you out because you're, you're probably a part of this as well. Now, let's count down to the real basics of this award. Now, the Legion of Valor, step over there, sorry, I need my distance. The Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Achieving, it's kind of a special award. There's not very many given out in all the United States. There's not very many given out in all ROTC programs, and there's programs in Europe, Japan, Okinawa, Korea, and the continental United States, Alaska, and Hawaii. It's given out annually by the Legion of Valor for scholastic achievement, ROTC achievement, and outstanding work done within your ROTC program. To qualify, you have to be at least a junior in the ROTC program. If you make it, you get the award in your senior year. It's usually presented at the beginning of the year. We just got the award and it's just recent. Some of the more detailed qualifications, you have to be in the top 10% of your ROTC class. He's in the top 1%. You have to be in the top 50% of your academic class, he's far above that. You have to be recommended by your senior army instructor and your principal. Ms. Wheeler signed a letter recommending him for the award. Everything gets sent up to our brigade, and then from brigade, they consolidate things and send it on up to US Army Cadet Command. And then Cadet Command takes everything and sends that on up to the Legion of Valor. And then they scrutinize things over the summer, all the way till about August or September. So it's not just another little ribbon or medal or achievement you get, it takes a whole lot. Mr. Jones didn't know about this. You also have to have letters from at least three teachers that go along with the package. Now that says a lot right there in itself, but let me give you a few more figures. There's 314,000 junior ROTC cadets in the nation. That's quite a few. Of that, 50,000 to 80,000 of them are in their third year, or going into their senior year as Mr. Jones is now. That narrows it down to 50,000 to 80,000. Only about one cadet per every 4,000 might have a chance of receiving the award. This year, there was 29 Legion of Valor recipients in the United States, 29 out of 314,000. That's pretty outstanding. There were, and this says something about your state of Tennessee, there were seven from the state of Tennessee, correction, seven from our brigade. Five were from the state of Tennessee. One was from Michigan, and one was from Kentucky. So Mr. Jones, kind of says a lot there, to be one of 29 out of 314,000.
I don't believe this.
I would like making, you know, All-American in my book. So with that, I'd like to give the note to General Steiner and the certificate to Mr. Poston to put on, or for you to put on to uniform all at your brawn, help General Steiner out. And then, Mr. Poston, if you could, could you please present with the certificate going along with General Steiner? I'll give you the certificate.
Yes, sir. Now, this is going to be a challenge. It probably has, hey, alligator clips quit, and that's simple. He's got so many medals already, it's, I don't know where to put it. Can't see this little thing here, and I surgery. We'll put it right up here. Okay, alright.
The alligator clips wouldn't fit on the medal. We worked off quite a few hours today. You can adjust that and put it where it goes in the right place, just like, I'm going to shake your hand. Congratulations.
Outstanding. God's do you. Let me say just a couple of words in my hand. This young man is very special, and he didn't get to where he is without a lot of air. Outstanding leadership. I give Colonel Salazar, Master Sergeant Terry, all the kudos for all the help that they give. This is an absolutely outstanding program. With this sequestration, the Cadet Command is being forced to cancel and cut some of the ROTC programs, and hopefully this one is not in jeopardy. The Tennessee Tech is, and Johnson City, East Tennessee State, is the thing most would give, give them to kids. And there's less productive organizations and units. They work every weekend, they are somewhere doing things to better their proficiency, to teach them leadership, and so on and so forth. He didn't get to where he is without the help of people like you, and I just thank you so much for this, and for the support that you have given this program and this young man here. Thank you very much.
What's all that?
Good job.
What's all that? Let me cry.
Alright, the next person is to recognize Greg Leach.
I'll figure that issue, sir.
Alright, it's been removed. Approval of consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept a consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
We approve.
You will?
Yeah.
Vote.
His computer keeps going off, it doesn't stay on long enough.
It stays on?
It goes, stays on about 15, 20 seconds and goes off.
Oh, I don't know anything about you.
He's got to go in there at the program and, it's on so many seconds.
Will you want some paper, paper packet?
Is Jack back there?
He's talking about his eye.
Yeah, I know, he's just setting for a time delay.
Yeah, that's what it is, it's setting for time delay.
Let's copy the agenda.
Okay. Here's a hard copy.
I have one.
Okay.
Alright, we're waiting on Johnny and Danny and Wallace.
What we voting on?
Consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll get it, we're getting there.
Consent agenda, voting on the, what's going on here?
Confirm it.
Anybody wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crete Moore, yes. Williams, yes. Heatherly, yes. Warwick, yes. Ryder, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next item is approval of regular agenda, we've got an addendum, 8D. Most pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the regular agenda.
I have a motion to approve with the addendum, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? Any discussion? Alright, vote if you will, please. And Collins, show us the roll.
Bane, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Crete Moore, yes. Goins, yes. Heatherly, yes. Warwick, yes. Ryder, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Warwick, yes.
Thank you. Next item is comments from the chair, the only thing I want to say is welcome everyone new that's here, and look forward to working with you guys, we're going to have a tough budget year, and hopefully we can find some kind of common ground that we can all work on. Director's monthly report.
I gave you all a copy of our director's report, and I'll just read, maybe make a few comments as I go along. First of all, do want to welcome our five new board members, and also those five returning board members, as we begin this new school journey, which we're on the 20th day of school, so we're well underway. And I encourage, once again, as we always do, we must stay student-focused as much as we can on behalf of our children. So although this is the first board meeting since the 2014-15 school year began, students have completed 20 days of school. From all indications, we've had an exceptionally smooth beginning. Once again, we want to celebrate the academic successes of last year and quickly move to meet any challenges. For two consecutive years, we've had no focus schools and another reward school. Carable Elementary has been recognized for being a reward progress school and will be honored at our October board meeting. At that time, we should have the officially signed document giving them this distinguished designation. During the past four days, directors from across the state met with State Department of Education officials, along with Governor Haslam, to analyze and have open discussions about the present educational initiatives and plans for the future of education in Tennessee. Much anxiety and anticipation exists regarding common core and changes in testing requirements. Along with this anxiousness are the unknowns that may result from the next state legislative session, which will obviously drive what we as educators will be doing in our classrooms for years to come. Educators expect change and always rise to meet new and sometimes quite daring challenges. Our plates are always full with plenty to do. We will continue to emphasize the team approach, which is together everyone achieves more. Over the next few weeks and months, the central office staff is willing to meet with the board in workshop settings in order to get a better understanding of some of the most pressing issues and concerns. Some of these issues, and this is just a short list, but some of these issues require immediate action. Indicated below are some of the items for possible workshop consideration. A full analysis of the budget, a detailed description of the development and implementation of the new drug policy, our five-year strategic plan. And let me say this on the five-year strategic plan, Campbell County was, we volunteered and the state's waiting to see, we're doing a 2-1-2 program plan. We shared that with you before, and they're excited about seeing two years in the past, the present year, and two years in the future, how that plan develops, and so we'll be doing that along with the five-year strategic plan that's pretty much underway. Our academic and accountability standards and measures, our capital projects and needs, and a full review of safety measures and SRO program, and then I just said et cetera, et cetera. So also, sometimes during this school year, the board will have the task of hiring a new director of schools. A timeline will need to be developed for that process. As most of you know, my contract ends on June 30, 2015. My health and, or my family's health allows me to continue my work, I'm willing to do so. If the board chooses to allow me to work until the end of my contract, I'm also willing to assist the incoming director in whatever capacity I can. We certainly need a smooth transition, and our children deserve it. Thank you.
Any comments for Donnie? Questions for Donnie? What is our timeline on our budget?
I don't know.
Or are we?
We have to adopt it, prepare it, but I will, between the, have a little bit of time. Committee meeting, just as soon as you guys can, we need to meet and approve the budget if it won't be, for the five that are returning, if the budget decision seems it was lagged here, and we need to prove as soon as possible so that we can get.
I think Sharon's got that on the agenda. Okay, alright, thank you, Donnie. Alright, next item is recognize Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item, we have two items on the agenda, I have a C there, review of bids, we have one bid with you, in your packet there. We solicited for bids on the 24th day of July, season opening, 26th day of August, for a new serving line of CPX. Received bids for free business, hotel and restaurant supply, $50,477. Mobile fixtures, $37,288.55. And trapeze equipment incorporated, $40,438.43. And trapeze equipment incorporated, $40,000.484. Recommendation is to loan fixtures and to loan from Bestwood, $37,288.65. Also, the recommendation of Vicky Woodard, the school district supervisor, chancer letter attached there, too. We have the money in the budget. It's appropriate last year as well as this year.
All right, what's the pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the one that Mitch Woodard recommended.
I have a motion to accept the serving line bid. Do I have a second?
Second.
Having discussions?
Yes. Mitch Woodard, how many kids are we feeding a day at Campbell County High School?
We can increase starting this year compared to our community ability and then we're up to about nine to ten. We're trying to do a makeshift line out in the dining room right now until we get this system in place.
I've had several complaints from parents and a few kids about not being able to get their lunch in time. Is this going to help the flow?
This would be two separate lines actually that will help feed that wonderful lunch hour.
And when will this be installed?
The company has told me it could be anywhere from six to nine each.
So what are we going to do in the meantime?
Well, Marcus, if we're doing the makeshift out in the dining room, that's helping. The students are getting used to that now. She did, I was up there today and she did about eighty through that line. So that's going to help us some until we can get this set up.
Okay.
Another thing I'm seeing, the things will do for us, there's a couple of club meetings today at the first part of lunch and I think the football players come in at the last part of lunch, so they're kind of spreading it out a little bit and that's helping us some.
Okay, thank you. I thought, so everybody eats at one time?
That is correct. It's a one hour, it's from 11:13 to 12:13. But what we're asking, you know, is that when students come, if the line is long, to go visit with their friends for a few minutes and then the line goes down. We're getting through pretty quickly.
How are the cooks handling this? I mean, that's a lot of kids. How are the cooks handling this? I mean, have we added extra help there?
Yes, we have.
We have?
Yes, it's working very well.
Okay.
Invite y'all to come out and see it. It's awesome.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Vicky, on your line, you know, there's some delay and some students are not getting to eat at the time. Do they still get to go back and get their lunch or if they're late going through, do they still get to eat or not eat?
The students, the students aren't getting to. Now, I haven't been told any that's had that problem. What I saw today was about five till twelve, the line had gone down quite a bit, like everyone was too agree, and then a lot of the football players come in about that time.
Do they still get to eat, right, in that line?
Yes.
Are we facing this issue at the other schools also? Are we facing this issue at the other schools also? I've been, it's brought to my attention at the
No, really, we are
at Jack'sboro that we're having
Some, we're still kind of working on labor issues. If participation is going up, of course, our goal is to have this problem because we want more children to be eating. Countywide, I have a breakdown of my board, if y'all want me to send it to you. Countywide, we're up about 25 percent of participation in breakfast and we're up about 21 percent in lunch.
Well, I've heard some of the cafeteria workers are having problems keeping up with the extra amount of kids that are coming through. Is that being addressed?
It is, yes. We're working over schools that, there's still a couple of schools that could provide some additional help.
This increase was due to the change in the kids eating free, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I would vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Fay is, Berg is, Collins is, Creakmore is, Collins is, Heatherly is, Ford is, Ryder is, Ritter is, Wilson is, Hushen is.
Thank you.
The other item, Chairman, is to request permission to advertise videos for HPA-C system at Delta Offspring.
Do I have a motion to approve the bid? Advertise for the bid?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? You know what we're voting on, Jeff? You want to tell us again?
HPA-C system advertising for HPA-C at Delta Offspring.
Okay. All right, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Fay is, Berg is, Collins is, Creakmore is, Collins is, Heatherly is, Ford is, Ryder is, Ritter is, Wilson is, Hushen is.
Thank you.
Chairman, the only other thing is for Fay on item F there.
Fay, do you have anything for us? This is your call.
Newly elected board members, I apologize for spreading a 49-page document on you at the meeting. Normally, these things are emailed to you. We're having some technical difficulties at the high school. Mr. Cannon's going to work with you next week. Hopefully, we get those issues worked out. Basis of activity report from all the schools, oversee those each month. We've had close the year out. The auditors picked up our books, all the schools do on section of the second. Mr. Hill emailed me on Tuesday. He has gone through all the schools' records. He said with the exception of two, right now, they have not found any problems at this point in time. They will move on to the final statement preparation and review stages and issue any comments at that time. And if there are any comments, I'll go over those with each bookkeeper and then he will issue an audit practice. I would like to sit down with each of you newly elected members at your convenience. I am the bookkeeper at Campbell High School. I also oversee the bookkeeping of the 11 other schools. And at your convenience, if you would like me to come to you or you to come to me, I would gladly sit down and explain these reports, because like I said, 49 pages, that's a lot of work.
It really is.
Fifteen minutes, one hour, one day. But if you have any questions for me, like I said, I'm at Campbell High School, call me there and I'll be glad to pass my cell phone number on through you anytime you have a question or anything. Anybody have anything at this time? Mr. Hill said right now he did not encounter any issues what he had gone through with the nine schools he had gone through, so that's a good thing.
Did Jack ever get that straightened out in emailing these things?
That's what we're working on. Right now, Aspen, the attendance, that takes priority over everything. That's how we get our money and that's what we want.
Thank you.
So right now, that takes priority over everything.
Thank you. All right, items for action. A, establish date of a workshop discussed school budget and school board policy. Roger, I think you put that on there.
Yes, I think we need, the new ones at least need time. I think Ms. Heatherly had said, Mr. Poston had maybe said next Tuesday.
Yeah, but I understand the finance committee is meeting next week, so I think they're meeting Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesday and Thursday, they're going to start at six and go to eight on Tuesday and Thursday.
Can't we meet over the central office a minute?
Yes, we could do. Be good downstairs, we've got plenty of room.
But you won't be there, Jeff, right? If we do that?
What time would y'all start?
We'd start at six, I guess. Six?
We can make arrangements where that either I or Richard will be there and I can go and go the other ones. One thing I would ask that as opposed to trying to do your budget and your school board policies collectively, deal with one and then deal with the other so that
So there are two meetings?
Yeah.
There are two?
Well, and the budget's the most prevailing issue.
Speak into the microphone, I can't hear you guys. I can't hear you guys.
Sixteenth? Is everybody okay with the sixteenth?
I've got no problem with that.
Six o'clock? Is that okay?
Downstairs would be better, wouldn't it?
Yes.
And we'll be downstairs.
Downstairs, yeah.
September the sixteenth, 6:00 PM.
That's right.
Well, I request we leave open the part about school board policy. It might be something we want to ask while we're doing this. I don't, we've got to have workshops, I'm sure, to discuss things. But if I get a choice of that, this, I'd prefer we leave it in there. If there are some questions we want to ask when we're talking about budget, we probably need to.
Have we gotten all the new board members' policies manual?
Yeah.
Okay, we need to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, sixteenth at six o'clock at the central office downstairs.
Okay.
Okay?
Who's banging food?
It's Vicky, Phil, I guess. And we're going to leave on there the
Then I'm going to Zumba.
Discussion of the school board policy. I agree.
Please.
All right, everybody good with that? All right, next item, which is a very important item. Request permission to approve Fay Heatherly to apply for the treasury of the TSBA in November election and state convention. Ms. Heatherly, you had this put on here. You want to discuss it with us?
Well, I think the one important reason that I would like to do it is to have contact with the board of directors and be aware of all of the issues that come up currently. I think it's a good, it's a good way for me to connect from the state level to our local board and I'm willing to do it and would look forward to doing it. And I think it's a plus for our school board to have local representation on the state direction.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I would appreciate it and
All right, can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion. Do I have
Say it, say it.
Thank you. You know, some things that people may not know about Fay, but four years ago, I guess it was?
Yes.
If she had won the election, she was in line to be the president of the TSBA for the whole state of Tennessee. And I think that's the goal again, to get to that spot in the road. So, all right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? If you will, please vote. All right, anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Fay is, Berg is, Collins is, Creakmore is, Collins is, Heatherly is, Ford is, Ryder is, Ritter is, Wilson is, Hushen is.
Thank you for serving Fay.
Oh, you're very welcome.
All right, next item, C, consider approval of 14-15 coaches and volunteer coaches. And there's a huge list of those people. Who wants to, first, let's get a motion to approve it and then we'll have a discussion. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the coaches as listed.
I got a motion. I have a second. I got a second. Mr. Creakmore, now we'll discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, on, I guess, LaFolde Elementary's listing, Mike Reynolds is a tennis coach. We got a tennis team at LaFolde Elementary.
Is he here? I think he's here, isn't he?
I got one in.
Is he laughing? Okay.
I don't, I think that might be a typo. Does he coach tennis at Jellicoe? Or somebody else is listed there, too, so.
Do you have a copy of that?
Come on up here.
Do we not have a copy of that?
It's on your iPad.
Oh.
I was just, I seen y'all with the He's listed under LaFolde Elementary as a tennis coach and at Jellicoe High, you've got Angie Music. Angie Douglas. It's a different name on here. Says Music.
Let me get that big document.
Yeah, just, I think it's just an error, so we need to correct that. Other than that, I don't, I didn't see any problems with that.
I believe you got, Mr. Chairman, I believe you got the boys and girls high school. Basketball coach reversed also, Campbell County High School.
Okay, let's fix that now before we approve it. And it's at the high school?
Yeah, Campbell County. You got Brad as the boys, Matt Howden the girls.
Okay, we need to fix that one. There are some of these individuals that are volunteers that you
Yes.
Do they go through the same background check as everybody?
Yes, they do. As a matter of fact, they have the same background check, background check and everything. We're allowed to coach. Focus is the living clock. I mean, it will change throughout the year. We'll have volunteer coaches listed now and then the season's starting, they might quit. So we'll keep that thing
Who's in charge of putting the list together?
Ms. Carson.
Okay, so we need to work with Ms. Carson on getting these names corrected.
Speaking of, Ms. Carson, she gets these from each high school, elementary, middle school, and she writes her best friends in.
They may have a tennis team in it, don't they? They do, we need to add one to Jellicoe, man.
Johnny, you're, you're the one that knows all these
Everything, I didn't recognize what Clint brought up, probably should have.
Have you had a chance to really look through?
Yeah, it looks okay.
All right. I've got a motion and a second, and I assume that that'll be, once they are corrected, these things are corrected.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one question, and that is, have all of these coaches been approved and recommended by their principals?
Good question. Is that right?
I assume it is, but
I think originally, they were supposed to be approved by the principal. I don't know what's on paper.
Yeah, they'll send, they'll send us either a letter or an email.
Once Ms. Carson gets that document corrected, if they'll just email it to us, that'd be great. All right, if you would, go vote, please.
Oh, that's right. One other thing, I've got
Okay.
Mr. Adam Hunley, they got him at Valley View and he should be up there.
Okay.
No, well, Valley.
Well, Valley, I'm sorry.
We need to change that. Did you hear that, Mr. Bruce?
No.
Sarge?
Mr. Hunley, you got him down at Valley View. He should be up there.
Okay. You know, it might be a good idea to get it to each one of the principals and make sure that they're okay with the list and then
Actually, there is Adam Hunley at Valley View, too.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I bled you brought that up.
You've got D.J. Osborne and Jamie Webb.
Johnny's a sports guy.
Sports, that's what I should direct.
That's right. Okay.
But Ford.
Just work this over and come back, vote, vote, make a difference.
But does it have to be approved tonight? Do we have some?
Game start.
Huh?
Game start.
No. We're not like, we're a basketball
Football's already going, so.
Football. We can, I can send you out and correct this.
Sarge, you hear what he said?
Yes, I did.
And if Johnny's okay with it, I'm okay with it. All right, if you'll finish your vote there, Mr. Collins, we'll go on. All right, anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Fay is, Berg is, Collins is, Creakmore is, Collins is, Heatherly is, Ford is, Ryder is, Ritter is, Wilson is, Hushen is.
Thank you. We had an addendum, 8D, consider electing a TLN representative for the Campbell County Board of Education. And maybe that ought to be you as well.
I'll make a motion with Ms. Heatherly.
I'll second the motion.
I got a motion and a second for Ms. Heatherly. Do I have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, maybe I could just explain what that position is.
And Donnie, you could do that as well, too, but it's a board representative from, from
the boards from all over the state of Tennessee, and they are in a network that stays close in touch with the legislative body in Nashville, and that person from, like, from this board would be responsible for getting all of that news and all of that, keep our local board updated on all the issues that go on legislatively.
We appreciate you, sir. All right. No more discussion? If you would vote?
Yeah.
Show us the vote, please.
Fay is, Berg is, Collins is, Creakmore is, Collins is, Heatherly is, Ford is, Ryder Fay, yes. Barge, yes. Collins, yes. Creekmore, yes. Collins, yes. Heather, yes.
I don't even know right now.
Rodney, yes. Wilson, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Looks like you're going to be busy.
Well, thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, items for discussion, discuss mandate cost of drug testing. I think you put this on there, Mr. Bain.
Yes, I did. A lot of questions have come to me about our new teachers, new subs, existing contract workers. The question is, you know, why are they being mandated to go to CHETs for their drug test at a cost of around $125?
Right, getting same calls.
And not being given an option to seek a, another certified lab at a much lower cost. So, I'm bringing that before everyone. That's the question I'm asking.
Is his microphone on? I can't hear, I can't hear anything on that side over there.
Yeah, showing it's on.
Okay. You've got to speak right into.
Got to get closer. I need to repeat myself.
Go ahead, if you would, I'll hear you from...
Can everybody hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's, a lot of questions have came to me, and it's been brought to my attention that all of our new employees, teachers, subs, and existing contract employees are, it's being mandated, but they have to go to CHETs for their drug tests at a cost of around $125. And the question that's been presented to me, and I have myself, is, is why are they being mandated to go there at that cost and not given an option to seek another lab that's certified at a much lower cost?
I think Mr. Bain also knows a place that is a whole lot less expensive than the 125. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
I got the same calls, and I think when I inquired, we have an existing contract. Is that right?
We do. Same time, this is a, this is new for all of us. And whenever it was first introduced, of course, you know, the involvement of the board and us and trying to get a drug policy that was acceptable, we tried to follow one that's already in existence, and that was Knox County. And there's so many, so many different aspects of this contract, I'm sure, that we can tweak and change as time goes on. And Tammy, you may be able to address it better than I can. But I know that one of the things that they encouraged was, if you have someone local, an organization local that has the doctor that does all the nine panels, was that, that was...
I don't know how we came to use CHET, but I do know that I can tell you it is expensive.
It is.
They've done a great job for us so far. They work for them, they are DOT certified, and I think that's part of the policy. At the time, while the board chose to use them, and they were local, part of the whole thing, just my experience so far that we've been involved with since school started, it has the chain of custody attached to it. They do all the screens, they send it to the labs, the lab picks it up. If somebody does have a positive grade, Dr. Burrow reviews that. The person is then called by Dr. Burrow to confirm their prescription to him and validate it. He calls us anytime anybody has a positive grade and lets us know this is what he's done, and he's either already spoke to them and they verified it, or he's still waiting them to come in, because I think they have three days to proceed that. It's been a very good process on their part, but yes, the cost factor has been an issue for a lot of them.
I think it's divided into like, what, three or four categories?
Yeah. What we're getting with them is a nine panel. They send us all the reports of the, that's $75 for the nine panel, and I think that's why the board chose to do that, because it was the one that had the most drugs tested with it. And then we do the alcohol breathalyzer. All of them, forty-six dollars for that.
How long is the contract? Is it aim...
I don't know if we signed a contract.
That was my question, if we have a contract, or are we just being told to have to go there?
I don't know that.
I don't think there's a contract signed as such. Mr. Bain, does the place that you know do exactly the same thing?
Yes, and I believe it's an eight-panel test. It's a standardized drug test, and yes, it's much cheaper. There's at least two places local that provide drug tests cheaper than that.
Well, Tammy, would you please get with Mr. Bain and maybe look into that for us?
Yes.
Because I had the same questions thrown at me. We had some subs that would have to work three days to pay for the...
Yeah, that is correct.
And two...
Good point.
Of course, like I say, this is all new for everyone. This is one that, it's gone a lot smoother than I really expected it would be after twenty days. But Steve, we need to get some of the reps from CHET and possibly some of the other people come in and give us an overview of what they're doing. And then we need to look at the policy with our new board members especially, and go over the whole thing in one of our workshops.
Yeah, and I have to say, it has been, the cost factors have been all negative. Everybody's been very, this is what we need, and they've been very complimentary of the drug policy itself, and proud that Campbell County's been progressive in the board backing that decision, so we can say that, too.
We were able to shop around last year, year before, wasn't it, and got some changes in the background checks and made some major comparisons.
I think also there's, there's some other stuff that actually needs revised on that policy. We can look at the whole thing.
Absolutely.
I think it gets sometimes into personal lives and stuff. We can look at it.
It's a work.
Good idea.
Mr. Bain, will you get with Tammy and maybe talk to her about that for us?
Yes, I sure will.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Legal matters?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cantrell, seeing to the new board members, he apologized for not being here. There are, there is a letter that is going out to each of you all, and I'm not sure if you've received it or not, that Mr. Cantrell sent out, to kind of discuss three, three issues that'll be, he would like to speak with you all on in the executive session, especially the new members. The first issue is going to be with any litigation that he would like to talk with you all about. The second issue is going to be changes in law with regard to the No Confessions Act, as well as changes in laws to conflict interest statutes. And so, of course, all board members are welcome to the executive session, but specifically that he would like to address the new members, so that you all can kind of get caught up on those issues. But other than that, I don't have anything to present.
You know, we've been dealing with that issue with the canceled check. Where are we on that issue with the, Mr. Sharp?
At this point in time, I'd have to defer that to Mr. Cantrell.
He was making payments. I'm not sure how many's come in, but I'll get with Karen tomorrow.
So he is making payments?
With regard to the executive meeting, you all get with Gail to get a date that's good for you all, Mr. Cantrell, to assess to work around it, and you're in the next couple of weeks.
Maybe do it at the next meeting? You want to do it in the next two weeks?
He can do it as soon as, you know, as soon as you all need to, as so long as it works within his medical range.
I'll call and talk to him.
Yeah.
Jeff, was you aware that he's making payments on this check? Okay. All right, recognized school board members. Mr. Wallace, do you have anything?
Do you have anything you would like to say to the board or the people? You can say whatever you want to.
Not at great terms.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. What did we do about the soccer at the high school?
They worked it out.
Okay, they worked it out, it's worked out. Okay. Now, I'd just like to welcome all the new board members and look forward to working with everyone of you, and hope we can work together and make a better thing for our children and our teachers and our community.
I'd like to welcome the new school board members, and also appreciate all visits, while perhaps I'm back.
Glad you're back.
Glad he's back.
Hope I can just hang in.
You know, that brings up something else. Is Jack still back there? You know, it got brought up, what, five, six months ago, if we're absent at one of these meetings, that we can vote on these iPads. Can you not see that software gets installed on those things? Dale Cantrell told me last week we could do it through Skype, and Gail would have one sitting here, and then we would vote yes or no, and she would record that vote. Okay, you'll...
You can only, I think you can only do it once, twice a year, though. Just once a year. You can't do it every month.
It sure is convenient.
Oh, it is.
You know...
If somebody's going to be out of town, but it's just one time a year.
Well, Dale told you...
Unless they changed it.
Dale told me he'd done it two or three times.
It was one time a year.
I'm sorry.
If you can vote, how you can vote if you're not at the meeting, via Skype or some video conference?
Well, I apologize, I need to kind of get my bearings. I wasn't here when this, can you rephrase?
Yes. We've had some members that's had some illnesses.
Okay.
And were out of town. And I think there's some legislation came through in Nashville that would allow a member to vote, not by proxy, but by some video conferencing call through Skype, Dale had told me.
Generally speaking, I think that that is permissible, but you've got to make sure that it's actually during the meeting.
That's right.
They participate, and they actually have to be able to follow along what's going on. I don't, I don't think you can do it, maybe just kind of telephonically, you can see a picture of them, they actually have to be able to be in a...
Well, just check with Dale on that for us, because we've had some illnesses that would like to...
Sure.
Mr. Rodney?
The only thing, on the breathalyzer, I had some complaints, but they couldn't do it at CHETs. So, they kept having to go back. Is that being corrected, Tammy, or not?
Listen, I think on, we'd been doing it about a week and a half, and it went down for a day and a half. They ordered a new one. They had to get retrained on it, and then it was backed up by the next week, went back. So, we did have several, and we called them back, and they came back to me with everything. So, yeah, you're right, you did go down, but they ordered a whole new breathalyzer.
And the other complaint I heard about it was, no one told the people that were coming in how much they were going to have to put in that little cup, and it wasn't enough, and then they had to sit and drink all this water. Nobody shared with them what they needed to do. But somebody needed some little directions better for them, I think.
As far as the amount that they have to, the speed's in a cup, I'll be honest with you, I'm a few authority on that, but I do go through the procedure about what is absolutely supposed to happen, okay? And the cost factors and everything, but that part, no, I don't actually talk to them.
And they said that they didn't at CHET either, and they were afraid their reading was going to be false, then, because then they drunk all of the water and waited around and stuff.
I will say this, it does tell them in the policy how much is in there. So, if they read and acknowledge and sign off, it is in the policy, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Berg?
I don't know if this question needs to go to Mr. Poston or Mr. Marlowe, but we had ISS teachers. Whose decision was that to cut their pay? And what happened to the money, I guess, is what, where did that money go in the budget?
Okay, now, as you know, for the last three, four year, the board had encouraged, now, this started before I came on, as I understand it, they were encouraging all the ISS people to get their certification. And, of course, as, as the first part of last year, there was a consensus from the, from the board, after this year, we don't need this in the budget. And so...
That's where I'm confused. It never was...
It was voted.
And I've had, it wasn't, it was voted?
No, it never was voted.
That's what I was going to say. I don't remember voting on it. I just, what I'm saying, I don't know...
So, when we did the budget, we, we set, we set them up and gave them opportunity for stand on five days a week under the teacher's pay program, which would allow them insurance. Of course, encouraged them, all of them that would, to finish their coursework up. And I know the question we asked Mr. Cantrell, how many ISS people they have in their system that, that didn't have degrees. He said all of them had degrees. And I know there was discussion following that. So, what we did on, on our plans and on our budget was to give them an opportunity to do the five days as assistants and with the insurance. And then the monies that were saved, we were able to hire, I think it's up to three positions or two or three positions additional teachers in the system. So, that's where we are with the monies.
Was it a significant cut on their pay?
Yes, obviously.
Fifteen, fifteen thousand?
It's huge. It was huge.
I heard of the amount.
More than that, it's more than that, really. We're asking them to do the same work, and these coaches put in a lot of extra hours. And I know, the last account I had of it, I think Mr. Horrigan, Mr. Parker was chairman, we made an agreement that they would work toward their degree. They would continue on. And all of a sudden, I never did see nothing. I don't know if anybody was checking up on it or not, but my point is, I don't know if everyone's noticed or not, but we're doing good in our sports program. And I know people say, well, you know, education, everything comes first, but if we want to have sports, we want to have coaches.
I agree.
And I guess, Ms. Marlowe, if we do the memorandum of understanding with you all, could we add, and I'm not saying that these salaries should be set up, but I think you need to look into, Mr. Poston, especially our high schools. I know we're in jeopardy at Campbell County, losing two football coaches, real jeopardy at Jellicoe, losing your basketball coach, who I'm assuming is working on his degree. And, you know, if he leaves today, I mean, what, is there anybody over there that...
We're in trouble.
You're in trouble. So, my, my question, and what I would like to recommend is, if we could have a memorandum of understanding, because I was told that some of the teachers were upset, that, you know, they were making teachers start in pay. I understand is what we had them on, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, which, you know, I can understand their argument, but if we could cut that back to around $24,000 a year for just our high schools and keep, keep our high school coaches intact, you know, I think we need to really look at the high school level, especially of keeping that.
Johnny, I agree with what you said there. We had a, for lack of better words, an understanding, as long as they were working on their degrees, that we would continue. Now, did you have discussions with these individuals, Don?
Yes, we, we asked where they were on all of the degrees.
And what did they tell you?
There were still, there's one of them, he didn't have any of his work completed. And then there was one, only lacked two or three more courses. It would be another year. Almost all of them lacked another year, two years.
But they are working on it.
Yeah, some of them are working on it.
Well, I think, you know...
And one of the things, you know, we talked about, just, and this was all casual, and conversation, too, amongst the board members, I even made a recommendation in some of the discussions, putting them on like the 60% scale, which, you know, that's the scale we use for people that's got the two-year college, just like with LPNs. And I thought that would been fire, but I was...
And I've not checked around enough. Who's doing Campbell County High School now? Is Ms. Wheeler still here?
I see that.
Who's doing Campbell County High School?
I think there's...
Baseball. He's helping with baseball, so, that's what I'm saying, you know, we, we've worked, the high school's worked to build that program up, and I just don't want to see it. I don't want to use the word go back to like it used to be, but, you know, you get tired of getting beat after a while, and those boys are doing good, and...
We've been, we've been...
I'd like to recommend that.
Mr. Berg, board members, Mr. Poston, I had thought about this, you know, a few times, and I realized that in the vocational department, we have teachers who are hired because they did work. And then they took some courses, and they were paid, you know, they're certified teachers. And I had thought about if there was some way that this board might look at how to look at their work they've done, and then do the certification that way. I don't know if it's possible, but I know that we have a lot of teachers who have, you know, they are teaching and never really went to college, they went to work, and then they got some classes in so they could get certified. And I can't remember, Sharon, what the term would be, work-based or something of that nature, but...
Trade in the industry is what they are, yeah.
But our MOU and the salary schedule that's there only applies to certified teachers. So...
I understand that, but, you know, they're going to complain if they come in and we pay them the same, and I can understand that fully. So, what I'm going to recommend, Mr. Marlowe's good at finding some money, I'm going to recommend that him and Mr. Poston get together for the high school level only, and bring us something back to vote on next month. Because I don't, I don't want to put... us something back to vote on next month, because I don't, I don't want to put, I don't want to put our programs in jeopardy, and that's, that's what I'd like to recommend. And also, I'd like to congratulate all the new board members, and I look forward to working with you all.
Mr. Berg?
Hello?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Why wouldn't you just attack the situation by paying them a coaching supplement equivalent to where you want them to be paid and allow them to still be paid as assistant, the way that he's got set up and paying them coaching supplement, and you don't have to worry about any appearance of impropriety?
If you did that, you'd have to raise their cost to Canada, wouldn't you?
No, you could pay them the ones that you want, just like you, you want to be picking out as you want to here. Why don't you-
Well, that's, you and him work it out and bring it back next month, and Ms. Crystal, you and Sarge need to stay on top of it, because you all are really in jeopardy.
Yes.
And people over really like your coach that they got. If you don't believe me, walk down the street with him or go to a ballgame with him or-
Talk to kid.
And so, that's, that's my recommendation, and if you all would do that, I'd certainly appreciate it.
You know, I'm way first set this thing up, and school suspension, Dr. Bredevins had it, and I don't remember voting, checking, you had to be a certified teacher in that program. And how we got away from it, I have no idea. I don't remember voting.
We got away from it, Sarge, because of the fact that there wasn't anybody in the building that, that were coaches, so they had to move some people in those positions, right, Ms. Marlowe? And, you know, everybody's not a coach. I mean, you can throw anybody out there.
I'm not talking about this school suspension, I'm not talking about-
Hey, Sarge, talk in your mind there.
I'm not talking about-
They used those positions to move people in that could coach, Sarge, that's what, I mean, that was all by-
It was set up, though, certified teachers. It was not set up for no, come in there and get your degree. I like, I like the program, they'll get me wrong.
I mean, you asked what, how they got there, that's how they got there, is the fact that-
But we never voted on it.
That's a long time.
That's a long time, that's right, but we never voted on it, it's still wrong.
I'm really confused here now, I'm really confused on, we've got some good coaches that we want to keep, right? And they don't have certification, is that correct?
They're working on it.
That's correct.
But they're working on it, okay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
When they had a, they had a little problem over at the high school here, well, back it didn't have a baseball coach, right? Remember it?
Yes.
Okay. They made a position somewhere at our coach, a coach up there, and they give him a teaching position or something, but they got it up there, they got him full pay and everything else, but we can't get our basketball coach nothing, except what they've got.
Well, we're trying.
He's trying to work it out.
That's what, that's what we're doing.
I know what he's trying to do, but I'm just saying how easy it was to do it over here, and we can't do it over there.
We're going to do it over there, that's what.
Okay. Don, you said something there, you hired three new teachers-
Same old thing.
Saving savings.
Hope they all knew.
The only thing I've got is, between now and the next board meeting, that we need to make a decision about right now, too, I'm going to be setting up these committees. And Johnny, where are we on our building? You're over there.
Far as projects?
Yeah, where are we on?
Well, the Campbell County High School, no projects going on, nothing really hanging out there, and the alternative school at Jellicoe, and we need to decide what we're going to do with the Jellicoe, is it elementary, football field? Need to decide what you're going to do there, so that's basically about the only thing.
Still have seventy-five thousand dollars.
We appropriate seventy-five thousand, which is not, you know, that's not near enough to do what you need done, so.
Okay. Well, I'll have some committees for next month. Now, talking about next month's meeting, I think the second Tuesday of next month, there's going to be a break, is that right? Fall break? And so, we need to change that, because it's the board's pleasure, and I've got to be out of the country the week after. Would it be possible to move the meeting up before break? Would anybody have a problem with that, doing it the first Tuesday of the month instead of the second Tuesday of the month? Would that be a problem, Gail, getting everything together? Would that be okay with everybody?
That's what I'm going to do.
What day is it?
Seventh.
Seventh, thank you.
So we will change it to October the seventh at six o'clock, that first Tuesday, if everybody's okay with that.
Our next meeting is October the seventh, instead of the following. Okay, let me, let me clarify. I'm also, I like your coach and everything, and they're doing good, and as long as they're going to, trying to get their thing, we're working with them, right? Okay, that's, that's right, I like that, yeah.
I agree with Johnny Lee.
Yeah, as long as they're working, they're working at, and we're working, helping one another, that's a good thing.
Ms. Hadley?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say it's good to be back home again. I missed the four years, and I've had a lot of people ask me during those four years, aren't you glad you're out of that mess? And my answer has always been no, because I have a heart and a passion and a love for education, and that's why I'm here. And I'm looking forward to this next four years with our board. I'm looking forward for us to work together in workshops to establish a vision and to establish long-range and short-range plans, and to explore our policies, to enhance and even benefit and make better our school system as a whole. And on one other note, I would love for our board to be a board of distinction, and I know the board members that I've talked to, sometimes I maybe get tired of hearing me say that, but the reason I would like for us to be a board of distinction is because there are fifteen things on the list that's required to become a board of distinction. And those items are to make us a better board. They are to make us to be more effective doing what we have been elected to do. And it's not just, there's a beautiful plaque that we get, and it's not just about a plaque to hang on the wall, it's that we are going to be better school board members if we can do that. And I printed off today a list of those fifteen items, and one of the first things that we can work on is have the majority of our board attend the first Fall District Meeting, which is just around the corner, September the twenty-third. So it would be wonderful if we could have a hundred percent, and we could just make sure that Homer has a lot of extra vitamins that day so he can go with us. And bottom line, I want to support our teachers, and I want to encourage them in every way that we can as a board. And my last statement is, it's all about the kids. Thank you.
Donnie, speaking about that, you know, we used to go to these things, the board in a van, and are you going to that district meeting?
I hope so.
Would the board, some of the board members want to do that again? Johnny, you win.
I'll probably drive over, because I'm going to be over in that area that day.
Think about that, guys. All right, Mr. Bain?
I also look forward for the next four years of this board working together for one goal, that is, can improve our schools. So I'm happy to be here, happy to be on the board, and like I said, I'm looking forward for us all working together, and the number one goal is improve our schools and for the kids.
Ms. Creepmore?
I concur with what Mr. Bain said. I look forward to serving with you, I hope we're a successful board, and thank you for all your warm welcome.
Mr. Gall?
I want to welcome all the new members, you know, like over here on the lawn. I've got two years left, I've been on this for a minute, that's why I have to get to the chair. That's all I've got to say.
I'm going to have to sit on this side of the room, that's all the argument.
All right, so I have a motion, Mr. Jervin.
I make a motion, we do.
All right.
installation on a separate, the field post for fifty-eight ninety-nine, that's fifty-nine hundred dollars.
Does any of these quotes have the concession stand in it? Does it?
Yes. No, not the concession stand, just the-
So the concession stand and the restrooms are not in your, your ledger? I thought you said the concession stand was from forty-five to fifty thousand.
Press box.
Press box.
The scoreboards, thirteen thousand, three thirty-five.
What was that? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Thirteen thousand, three thirty-five for the scoreboards and receivers, controls, et cetera. Installation is separate.
What's the total of the lot, Larry?
And then the lighting for the field is between ninety-five thousand and a hundred and five thousand.
We're not worried about the lighting, not now. I believe most of the games will be played at daylight.
Without the concession stand, you're right at one hundred and seventy thousand. Yeah. Without the concession stand.
Now, keep in mind, Mr. Marlowe, who brought this up, and I'm aware of it, there's a lot of drainage issues, I think, so regardless of what they do, they'll have to do some, some design work in order to get that plumbing and stuff up there from what Mr. Marlowe had said.
And the silver dollar, just, just remember, we paid three hundred and eighty-six thousand
dollars for Jack'sboro Middle School bleachers when we put those in there.
How much was the field house we just put in up there at Jellicoe Elementary, what did you about?
It was four hundred and eighty-five thousand, and we did forty thousand on the platforms additional.
Are you estimating the revenue going to come from? From capital?
So, we don't have that kind of-
We don't have that, that's what he said.
I'm still a little behind the, I, you, did you do the math on the hundred and seventy right to there? I, I was trying to get to there because-
That's without the concession stand.
Yeah, and I remember Donnie saying something about the installation of the gold post, I don't remember him saying what the gold posts themselves were as the-
Six thousand.
Six thousand? I thought that was the installation for.
Really? We just took two, you think, gold?
Fifty-eight ninety-nine? The post themselves?
Has the install-
That's what I thought you said, install. Uh, what about the post? Because what you've been doing, everything else, we've given us the material price and the installation price.
Gold post are fifty-eight ninety-nine.
The, the, the posts themselves are fifty-eight-
That's just the post.
We could do previous things.
It's just the post, not the-
And how much is it putting them up, Rick?
Excuse me?
How much is it putting them up?
It doesn't say, it says it's on a separate sheet, but I don't see it here.
And what's the date on those estimates?
Yeah, here it is, thirty-eight seventy-five.
Free installation?
Yes.
Sounds like kidding me. That's a rough, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Dig in the holes.
Installation.